I'd like to call to order this Public Works Session Action Meeting of the Mawa Board of Education for May 30th, 2018, 7:00 PM. Would you please make roll call?
Yes, okay. Mr. De Silva?
Here.
Mr. Gallo?
Here.
Mr. Kuzmarsky?
Here.
Ms. Conoco?
Here.
Ms. Mavertish?
Here.
Dr. Morthe?
Here.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Here.
And Ms. Barron?
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and Records specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on May 30th, 2018, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Will everybody rise for the salute to the flag? Ms. Conoco, would you like to lead us in this salute?
Pleasure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recess to executive session? Dr. Morthe, seconded by Ms. Conoco, thank you. We'll be away for about 15 to 20 minutes on this one. Thank you. (inaudible) I am going to say that I'm going to do a security update.
Today?
No. Last minute, Jim, because that gives me the opportunity to meet with the chief before he. What do you think? Huh? Unless I talk about these, I can do these. (laughing) May I please have a motion to reconvene? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Windrickowitz, thank you. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Anyone? Okay. (inaudible).
Good evening. My name is Gail Glorisi. I live at 27 Grist Mill Run, and I'm here to speak on R-5350, which is student suicide prevention. I'm looking around, some of the faces I know. I'm a resident of Mawa. I'm a retired 13-year employee of the Mawa Board of Education, and I'm the grandmother of a nine-year-old third grader at Betsy Ross School. I'm also an advocate for gun safety, and that's why I'm here tonight. According to our police department, there are approximately 250 gun permits issued every year in Mawa. Does anyone want to guess how many guns are in our town? There is no way to know, since there is no limit on the purchasing of long guns once someone has a permit. This is a serious issue for our town and for our most vulnerable residents, our children. Last year, the CDC reported that there are approximately 1,300 American children killed by guns every year. Thirty-eight percent of these deaths are the result of suicides by gun. The American Academy of Pediatrics believes that, given the impulsivity, the risk-taking, and the unpredictability of adolescents, we should promote safe gun storage as a routine measure rather than only when a concern or crisis arises. On Friday, May 18th, Dr. Shown, you sent out an email blast to alert the school community that the second season of the Netflix series 13 Reasons Why was about to begin. This series deals with teen suicide. On Tuesday, May 22nd, Mayor LaFaretta hosted a presentation of Be Smart for Kids. This program also deals with teen suicide and the need for the safe storage of firearms in one's home and vehicle. At the urging of a parent in our town, a notice of the Be Smart event was added to the school's bulletin board webpage about the program. Unfortunately, this is not a frequently visited page. There was no email blast to the community about this program that would have been much more effective, and I'm here to ask why. Where were the members of the board on May 22nd? I'm looking around. I see a lot of faces, but only my Gallo attended the Be Smart program. Where were the rest of you? So I'm here tonight to express my disappointment with how this matter was handled and to ask you to promote safe gun storage within our school community. I'm asking you to host a program such as Be Smart for Kids, or Asking Saves Kids, and Sandy Hook Promise. Any of these programs address this issue, and our community should be aware of them, and it should be hosted by the school board. This Friday, June 1st, is Gun Violence Awareness Day. I'm asking everyone to wear orange, to honor those who have been lost to gun violence, and let's start the conversation to keep our kids safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gail, where did the mayor post that notice?
It was posted on the mayor's website. It was posted on many Facebook sites, on Mawa Moms, Moms Demand Action, and the police chief had sent a police officer there. It was very informative, and it's all about just keeping kids safe, because the suicide rate is so high with guns. Where are these kids getting the guns? They're getting them from their homes, where their parents or guardians are leaving loaded weapons available for them to get their hands on.
Yeah. I, for one, am not on Facebook, so I was not aware about this. If I had been free, I would have attended. Since I've been on the board, I've been trying to support things that are presented in our town by the Mawa Municipal Alliance. I know tonight there's even a meeting at Town Hall about our police department, so I did not see that posting.
Well, in the fall, I received an email from the police chief the day after the event, because he had sent a police officer to speak to everyone who was there and answer their questions, and he talked about safe gun storage. And I sent him an email to thank him, and he responded that the police department is going to be doing a gun safety program, and he has ordered 100 gun locks, which will be distributed free to the residents in our town during that event in the fall. So I'm sure that will be much, much more publicized, and so I would encourage you all to go. But I think it's important for the school community to see that the school board is behind something like this, so I urge you all to get together and sponsor a program for the community and get everyone here to talk about making our kids safe. I thank you for your time.
May I? May I? Just jump in for a second. In regard to the emailing of those, we are very selective with what it is that we email our parents, because we go through either emailing too much or too little, and I make that decision, so that's not the board. So I want to answer your question if I may. That was a Mawa municipal event? It wasn't sponsored by the municipal?
No, it was not sponsored by -- no, it was sponsored by the mayor.
Okay. I thought, for some reason, my apologies, I thought it was, because Mawa Municipal Alliance information is always sent out via email.
Yes.
And I am aware that there was a request to do that, and I know that there were personal conversations in regard to putting it on the community board. However, in light of the times that we are in now, I think that there needs to be more sensitivity to that, so in moving forward, should there be these types of events, as long as they are being sponsored by reputable sources, and I'm sure you can understand that, I can't --
Of course.
When we send out something via our district email, we in turn are supporting what it is that we are doing. So as long as in a case like the mayor, in a case like the Mawa Municipal Alliance, I will be sure that those things, moving forward in regard to gun safety, in regard to suicide, in regard to mental health issues, those types of things, and safety, I will be sure that they go out via email as well as posted. Moving forward.
Thank you very -- thank you very much.
And Board Member Kuzmarsky was also planning on coming but couldn't at the last moment.
I only saw you, Mike.
I know, but Ben was -- Ben was planning on coming.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I will too. I have no problems. Dr. Shown, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do. Can everyone hear me, or do I need the mic, or is the mic on? The mic's on. I do have one report this evening. Board members will see that we have our administrators here with us this evening, and administrators love coming out at night, but they do so with a big smile when they are in support of a new administrator as part of their team. So my report this evening is to introduce to the board and the community the new Ramapo Ridge principal, starting in July. After -- if you would just wait for a second so people know who I'm talking about, all right, good. After receiving and reviewing over 85 applications, our interview committee initially interviewed 40 candidates. From the first round of interviews, our interview committee comprised of teachers and administrators interviewed nine candidates for the Ramapo Ridge principal position, and through this process, we narrowed our finalists down to four, who met with the central office team. We're recommending this evening Mr. Brian Corey for the position of Ramapo Ridge Middle School Principal. Mr. Corey has served as a middle school special education teacher in the Belmar Public Schools. Currently, Mr. Corey is vice principal at Tenafly High School, where he has been in that role for the last 14 years. Mr. Corey's references as a tremendous leader who is bright, professional, well-read, and well-networked. Mr. Corey works to bring people together and is extremely balanced when working through challenges. We are looking forward to bringing Mr. Corey on as part of our administrative team, and if everyone can sit tight to Resolution 16G, you'll see it happen. But welcome, Mr. Corey, as soon as we get there. That's it, tonight, thank you.
Speaker?
Yes, just one item for the board and the public as it relates to the STEAM addition. We had a great kickoff meeting with the construction manager, the contractor of the project, and our architect shortly after the project was awarded at the last board meeting. Just an update of where we are. Currently, we're going through applying for all the proper permits with the township. We're also going to be seeing, as early as next week, some of the construction fencing going up around the high school campus in the area of Building 7, behind the YMCA building, behind the cafeteria and auditorium, to start to designate where the construction area is going to be. The fence will be going up, and the trailer will be going up for the management team as well as contractor to be stationed out of it, and there will also be a privacy fence going up as well, a privacy screen on the fence to, again, better designate that area. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Farr, do you have anything for us this evening?
Our next board meeting, we are honoring our retirees, so I hope to see people in the audience, and that's it.
Jim Thirteen?
President's Report. On 5/14, the Mawa Schools Foundation end-of-year trustee meeting was held at Mawa Bar and Grill. The executive board's slate for the 2018-2019 year was approved with the following. Mary Beth Duffy is president, Brooke Gaslow, first vice president, Kate Kuzmarsky, second vice president, Jeff Lipkin, treasurer, and Michelle De Silva, secretary. So congratulations to everyone. And a meet and greet is scheduled for Wednesday, August 22nd, at Mawa Bar and Grill. It probably will take place around 7:00 PM. This is for people to learn more about what the Mawa Schools Foundation does for our schools. On 5/17, I had the pleasure of attending the Mawa High School Symphonic Band Concert, and the 22nd, had the pleasure of attending the Joyce Kilmer Spring Concert, as well as the Simply Springs Concert, and as always, our students were fantastic. It was really a lot to be proud of. And on 5/28, the Township of Mawa had a Memorial Day Ceremony, and once again, we had a lot to be proud of with our Mawa High School Marching Thunderbirds. They helped start the festivities with a parade that ended at Veterans Park, where a ceremony took place to honor the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. The National Anthem was sung by members of the Mawa High School Choir, and at the end of the ceremony, "America the Beautiful" was sung with audience participation led by members of the Mawa High School Choir accompanied by the Mawa High School Marching Thunderbirds and the newly-formed Honor Guard. And the festivities were capped off by beautifully moving rendition of taps played by three members of the Mawa High School Marching Thunderbirds, so thank you very much to them for volunteering their time to go out on a day, Memorial Day, and help support the fallen soldiers. And that is all that I have for the President's Report. Board Committee reports. Do we have any Board Committee reports this evening?
Just real quick for policy on 15K. We've got first reading and our first reading of policies and regulations, there are seven of them. 1550 deals with equal employment and anti-discrimination practices. 2431 is athletic competition. 2431.2 is medical examinations prior to participation in school-sponsored interscholastic or intramural team or squad. 2431.8 deals with varsity letters for extracurricular activities. 5350 is student suicide prevention. 5533, student smoking, and 8462, reporting potentially missing or abused children. These are all mandated policies and regulations. Most of them are updates of current.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Gallo?
Finance and Facilities Committee met to restart our effort to develop a long-range capital plan for the district. One of the items that was on our agenda also was to review the traffic study that was done recently in joint effort with Boswell and the police department, and we had sent some questions back to the police department and to Boswell. And we're meeting again, I think, on the 13th to continue. On negotiations, we met with members of the MAA, and we had, I thought, a very productive session, and we are scheduled to meet again with them on June 12th.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Board Member remarks or additional comments on reports or other non-agenda items? Any remarks?
Go first. Go first.
On Friday, Kyle and I are going to be attending a school board's sponsored security forum down at the Mercer Conference Center, and I just wanted to highlight the senior recital of Justin Kender at the high school, which was fabulous. One of our students is a phenomenal trombone player, senior, and she's going to study music and music education. She partnered with a student from Pasquay Valley High School, and they put on an hour-and-a-half-long program. It was sort of a capstone experience. It was phenomenal, and it was very well-attended, and it was attended not only by Justina's classmates but alum from previous years who came to participate and be part of it. And the alum also played with Justina and the student from Pasquay Valley. It was really -- it sort of tells me where the STEAM program eventually goes, you know, what we can do with capstone and pathways and our programming in that regard. It was really phenomenal.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything?
On May 17th, I was down in Trenton at No Costa District at a legislate -- joint legislative meeting with New Jersey PTA and New Jersey School Boards, and at that time, they had a series of speakers who had kept coming in and going out. There were nine assembly persons there and two senators. I got to meet Senator Teresa Ruiz. She's sort of been our advocate in education. She's very nice. And Mr. Sweeney, I'll get to Mr. Sweeney in a minute. This is what they talked about. They want to expand the mental health services. They wanted 2% camp waiver for school security expenses. Mr. Murphy wants to have his proposals for $3.2 billion to be put into our pension system. Park must be replaced with a replacement, because no one there liked parking. The budget, they're working on it, they've been in and out all day because they were working on the budget. It's got to be resolved by the end of June. Now, I'll get back to that in a second. Sweeney got to speak, and I didn't like him until then I heard him speak. I thought he was too much for --
Don't hold back, Peter.
I won't.
Don't hold back.
I thought he was too close to Christie when he was in, but he's really a nice guy, a strong-willed person. He told us he will shut down New Jersey if he doesn't get his way on school funding. Murphy wants to continue the way Christie's been going, just keep blowing money and blowing money and blowing money. He, this approach is more accurate. Follow the student with the money, in other words, on a per-student basis, and I'll be talking about that in a few minutes, but I was very impressed with him. He says we're $2.1 billion short for full funding for schools, which he hopes to have obtained or attained within five to seven years. It won't be overnight, five to seven years. And that was that meeting. It was very, very good. The first meeting I attended of this joint session was about nine years ago, and at that time, the economy had just crashed, and they brought economists in who told us at the time, don't expect a recovery quickly, it'll be about five years at the minimum before things started straining on. He was correct, it was what, it took about six years for it to happen, begin to happen. And then on May 19th, I was down in where you're going, Mercer County Community College, for the annual, semi-annual delegate assembly, and they had, I'm on the resolution subcommittee. We look at the resolutions before they come, and then we decide yea or nay on some of them. There were six total presented, of which four were rejected out of hand because they already had been addressed in our policy, so it wasn't necessary to readjust them, but two were accepted. The first one, excuse me, was submitted by the Board of Directors of the New Jersey School Board, dealt with gun safety, and it proposed a new policy language pertaining to school security, student safety, including prevention of gun-related incidents or other types of violence, as well as mental health services and school security enhancements. Another school district wanted to do a similar thing, but their approach, we had rejected, was to take and specify various arms, for example, AR-15s. And we said to them, what happens when there's a new generation of firearms? We've got to go back to this and revisit and say, AR-15s, AR-16s, AR-17s. So we felt this was the best way to approach this problem, and the New Jersey Scoreboard said it believes that ensuring the safety of our students, ensuring the safety of our students, requires a meaningful and uniform laws governing access to firearms, including stringent background checks throughout the nation, inter-agency collaboration to ensure the effective delivery of mental health services and early intervention strategies, and the state and federal financial support for security enhancement of the local school district level. So we are trying to address this. The second resolution came from a city, a town in New Jersey, and I never heard of it. It's Chesterfield, New Jersey. Anyone know where that is? You do? It's a very small town, and they dealt with school funding. The school -- (inaudible) Reform SFRA enacted in 2008 was intended to be the basis on which state aid was to be distributed to local school districts. The formula was designed on the principle of having state funding follow the child. However, due to the lack of resources to provide full funding of the school funding commitment, growth limits were included into this formula. Additionally, after initial cuts of, in the year of 2010, the first months of the Christie administration determined that no district would receive less state aid than the prior year. It appears that the Murphy administration has chosen to condition this policy, to continue this policy, based on preliminary numbers released by the state of New Jersey on March 15th. Now, on June 12th, the control is going to release the numbers, the budget numbers for the state of New Jersey, and that's going to lead to deciding how they're going to continue with school funding. As I said, Sweeney wants to follow the student, and Murphy wants to just keep putting money into it, and it's not fair to the young, to places like Chesterfield, who have lost enormous amounts of money because of that policy. It was a good meeting. Both meetings were very good. New Jersey's delegate assembly, all they do, all we do is we give them, we vote on policies. Those policies are used as a guideline to our advocates who meet with legislators in New Jersey, and they say, this is where we stand on certain issues, and it's invaluable, and it's never, it's never gotten old. The gun safety portion lasted two hours. They started arguing back and forth about what type of weapons should be covered, why are we bothering? We have the best, strongest gun laws in the country. Eventually, it came, when full circle came back to what the delegates, the, what do you call it? The leaders wanted, and that is a broad, general statement, less specific, so we don't have to keep coming and coming back and visiting this, and so that the advocates can go out there and advocate for what we're looking for. You mentioned earlier about the not coming to the meeting. What was sad this evening was that the police accreditation meeting was today at the Town Hall. Three people spoke, a whole town of 26,000 people. Three people spoke, and they were all positive, and it's a shame.
They squeezed me in at the end, Peter. So there's four.
Did you get stuck in there? Did they get your picture?
And people were allowed to call between 20:00 and 3:00.
Well, we're hoping they did. I lost my train of thought. All right, that was it. It was, I spoke as a board member, a member of the Board of Education, but not for the board. I made it quite clear to them at the beginning of the operation, I'm speaking to them as a board, a Board of Education member, but not for the board, as I did also for the Township Library. And I told them what a great job the police had done that evening when they came, when the chief came and the captain came and spent enormous amount of time, and continue to spend enormous amount of time. I've been amazed at schools, there are various schools throughout the district, and I've always appreciated the fact that there'll be an officer walking the building, who'll come in, walk the building, and check everything out, and walk out again, or there'll always be a patrol car nearby. They are going 110% beyond what they expected they would do, and I thought we were very pleased with the work. I was very pleased with the work that the police have done for our community. That's it. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All business. We have a motion to move on all business. It's 14A, Ms. Conoco, seconded by Mr. Windrickowitz. Any questions or comments about all business?
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes, and I am abstaining on check 090802.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. And we have 16A through DD, and a motion to proceed. Mr. Windrickowitz, seconded by Dr. Morthe. Any questions, comments, any board members before we proceed?
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes, and I am abstaining on check 090802.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. And we have 16A through DD, and a motion to proceed. Mr. Windrickowitz, seconded by Dr. Morthe. Any questions, comments, any board members before we proceed?
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
If we could stop for a moment? That's a congratulations, Mr. Corey. (applause) And I'd like to make friends tonight, really. Oh, sure, go ahead. All of you are absolutely welcome to head on your way. Thank you. If you want to. Mr. Corey, you must remain. Go. Go. Enjoy it. Have a good night. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And also thank the Mahwah Municipal Alliance for their two thousand six to five and eighty cent grant or donation for the Fit Club Advisors stipend. So thank you to both those groups. Okay, could you take a call, please?
Yes. Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except I am abstaining on check number zero nine zero eight two five and an item in fifteen I.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes, and I am abstaining on check zero nine zero eight zero two.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. And we have sixteen A through DD, and a motion to proceed. Mr. Windrickowitz, seconded by Dr. Morthe. Questions, comments, any board members before we proceed?
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
If we could stop for a moment? That's a congratulations, Mr. Corey. And I'd like to make friends tonight, really.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
All of you are absolutely welcome to head on your way. Thank you. Mr. Corey, you must remain. Go.
Enjoy the day.
Go, enjoy it.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. You can't leave, Ms. Rosa. Okay. She'll be so embarrassed if I do this again.
So, for transparency's sake, I know Dr. Shown and I had some conversations actually about the gun safety event. And I'm pleased to know that people are interested in what it's done, and I'm happy that those discussions are happening elsewhere. I too have said this before, I'm not a Facebook person. But I didn't actually go onto Facebook for this reason. I learned about the event through someone in our neighborhood that actually sent a flyer around coincidentally in the morning. And it was the morning of, I hadn't heard about it before. So, I did reach out to Dr. Shown, and I copied Chief Vitelli, because I thought this is an interesting public safety event, too. Didn't realize at that point that he was gonna send someone there, what he did, he responded. But my question was to be sending an email, because I knew if I didn't know about it, people probably didn't know about it. Initially, Ms. Lee, I don't know, I believe she's your secretary, she didn't provide an introduction, it was just an email, okay. Had responded and given me a reason that they don't send these or whatever. So I responded, again copying Dr. Shown and Chief Vitelli, and I responded, you know, thank you for your reply, appreciate the posting. Oh, she said it was posted on a community channel on the board.
It's a community link, I probably.
So that was the first thing. Again, I'm naive technically, so I don't know what this is. So my response was, embarrassingly, that I'm not aware of the community channel, and that there are many parents that don't use social media, which she said was posted on social media. So I said, I'm one that very rarely frequents Facebook, I don't even know how to use the other applications. But I did personally, I was one of them that shared the flyer. Despite my preference to avoid social media altogether, I thought it was relevant and important. I then received a follow-up phone call from Ms. Lee furthering why, and to your point, Dr. Shown, that, you know, the emails are viewed as a nuisance, this type of thing, that type of thing. So, I just, my concern is that on Friday, we received four email blasts for various reasons. You know, all due respect to this steam building, it has absolutely no relevance to me and my life and my kids' life right now. So I think it's great. But something like gun safety is relevant for everyone. And I feel like, at this point, your statement about doing so in the future, just my perception is that that's happening now, as we're raising it publicly. Because what I've raised it to previously, it was flat out, no, we're not.
Are you referring to the gun safety piece?
Yeah.
That most recent?
Sent me an email blast. So we just wanna be for transparency, and I did see.
Was that put on by just two women from a group that they created?
I don't know, it was again sponsored by the, I don't know.
To be fair, the event was on the district website in the community news section.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have to go searching for, we've had a conversation that the website is a great.
It's part of our website that's maybe not the most friendly, but it was absolutely there.
Yeah. But again, you know, my concern is that we're not doing everything we can be doing to get the parents involved and to get them to know, you know, go to these things. So I'll leave it at that. I do have a question for you all tonight, because we didn't see any emails coming out about that particular program. And I haven't heard anything that the board has done or that the school system has done as far as programs. We've had so many meetings since, even since Parkland. Have we had any, see something, say something? Any of those initiatives gone out through the schools? Because, I mean, my child's in grade school, but for me, I haven't seen anything.
We haven't, we haven't had anything with that. That was something I would do in conjunction with the police department. And with that said, today, the board received a very comprehensive email from our chief of police in regard to security initiatives that we have either received through our security info email, my own email, phone calls, and those things that have been brought up at board meetings. So what he did on this list is he took all of that, it's a culmination of everything, as a list of talking points for us. So I anticipate between now and the last meeting in June, not the thirteenth, we're gonna dedicate that to retirees. We're gonna sit down with the chief of police and the executive committee of the board, and we're gonna go through what they look like. Now, that doesn't mean that we haven't done things in regard to security initiatives, but the things that we have done are things that I probably wouldn't list publicly. And I know that you can appreciate that. There are a number of things that are on our list this summer that we're working with Mr. Bleeker with, up into including ordering lobby guards for both JK and for Lenape, because we've just completed those double-door locks. So now we'll be able to put that into place like we have in the high school. We've talked about the word I can't pronounce, how do you say?
Bollards.
Bollards. What we're gonna do in our case is we're gonna do planters. So instead of having these big pieces, we're gonna have large, one thousand pound pieces that are gonna be in front of Ramapo Ridge and perhaps another school. There is no cost, and, you know, the cost of safety is priceless, there's no doubt about it. However, when Mr. Windrickowitz brings up a two percent cap in being able to put some money into security, that would be real beneficial to us. However, we have a number of security initiatives that we're putting into place. I anticipate, after having the meeting with the executive committee at the board, that I will be able to offer a list to both email out to our parents and to do publicly with you as well. And I would do that in conjunction with the chief, who has been, and I must concur with Peter, outstanding. He's just an outstanding leader.
I agree. What I would just really once again wanna reiterate is there's a difference between full disclosure and transparency. And right now, I'm not getting any transparency. We get emails, you know, there have been how many shootings in the past two weeks, right? Two, in each Friday, ten kids died and some were injured last week. And we're not getting emails about that. We're getting emails about, you know, a TV series, we're getting emails about other things. I haven't seen anything, and we've, we're talking about this for how many months, and we haven't had a program for our high school students on.
If I may, with all respect. We're not a news corporation. Well, but it's not only that. I did send out the thirteen reasons. And although that may not be applicable to younger children, and I know you have grade school children, it is really applicable to a middle and high school. That has to do, I know, but that falls under the same umbrella as mental health. So to suggest we haven't done that, I just, I pause. The second thing that I've done most recently, which was another Friday email you're referring to, three, was all about bus safety. That refers specifically to an incident that you just mentioned that was on the forefront of the minds of twenty-six hundred parents who bus with us every single day.
We just wanna ask you a question about that.
But do you understand what I'm saying? So when you say that there is a difference between full disclosure and transparency, I just wanna offer that we've not just sat back in light of the events that have occurred around us. I just need to bring that to you. And the board is aware of that, they see those emails prior to. Okay, that's all.
But, you know, we're not getting emails on, there was another school shooting, and you pressed a shirt, what do you mean? We're not getting that.
But what should that email sound like, though? What would that email be?
It should be anything, any kind of email.
That's a news broadcast, is what I said.
Everybody knows, everybody knows that that happened, everybody's aware. So another email from the board saying, hey, there was another school shooting, I'm not seeing the benefit to that. That's why I'm not being a wise guy when I'm asking, what should that email look like, in your opinion?
Hopefully, there would be content, that's exactly my point.
What content, that's what I'm asking for. What would be the content?
We are issuing, you know, we're having a seminar, we're having this, we're having that, doing something with the community. I can't tell you what it is, because I don't know, but I keep hearing of all the meetings that everybody's having, and I'm not seeing anything. Again, just transparency, you know? I mean, the bus thing, tragedy, and I think it was a well-written and well-deserved email. But we're not talking about the shootings, we're just not talking about it.
But transparency is making sure that you're aware of, if something happens, we're making sure that you know about it. If there's not something that happened for us to make you aware of, what transparency do you feel is? Well, no, but no, but what you said is that there's no transparency. So that's different than, I think you should be doing something. When you say that there's no transparency, that means that, to me, that there's something going on behind the scenes that we're trying to keep from you and that we're not being forthcoming. And I just wanna make sure that we.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. Because I'm not seeing anything coming through, I don't know what, you know, if there is or if there isn't.
It also has to have a meeting for meeting's sake, it's not gonna do it. We have so many of these meetings, it bears to be turned off by. I think once we get a direction, we can attack it.
It is a process, and we've spoken with you, you speak with Dr. Shown, Chief Vitelli. It is a process that we are in, to tell people that we're, you know, stay tuned, we're taking care of it. Stay tuned, we're taking care of it every time there's an incident. Doesn't come across, people know the horrors of what's going on. People have already seen that we as a district are being proactive. We are.
How have we seen it, though? That's my question, is how?
At the high school, we already have that system in, we're talking about the two.
The one about Megan's law?
Right, the double doors.
No, the lobby guard.
Lobby guards.
I mean, you can't, it's not gonna happen overnight. It takes some time, and we are doing it, and we are talking with the police. But unfortunately, things do take time, and we have to go through a certain protocol to make sure that we do everything properly for our community.
At this moment, thank you, Ms. Conoco, at this moment, the superintendent is waiting to make a recommendation to the board on some items that we have been discussing. We are waiting right now on the township president and the mayor to get back to us with pertinent information from them. And we have been waiting for a while. So, that might be someplace you might wanna go and talk to them as well. So we are ready to move on some of these things, we just need to get a little piece of information from them. And once we get that, we can go ahead and Dr. Shown can make a recommendation to the board.
I will tell you that I can't even get into the high school myself.
Yeah, oh, no, I know, I can't either. I can't either.
I can't get it. So, I can't get it, I have to show my driver's license.
Did you not cover the background check?
I get this, I'm not saying anything else, except for that it's been months and months, and school shooting after school shooting, and.
We had, two months, two months ago, basically, we had our meeting. And we're waiting, we're still waiting for information from them. Thank you. Tony? Yes.
Mr. May, hello. Good evening.
David May, ninety-three Owaino Road. Just on this topic, I saw something a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention just as additional info for you guys to check out. Because I've been involved in the meetings with the certain council members. The NRA, not everyone's favorite group, not promoting them, but they have a program that's called School Shield, from what I saw. And what they do is they actually come in and do an assessment of the schools and tell you what you need in regards to SROs and security, and they kinda give you suggestions. And then they also have grants that are available to help you fund some of that stuff, which I know.
I'll check that out.
Funding's always a fun topic. And I'll be honest, I haven't looked at it yet. I saw an interview about it. I thought it was interesting, so I wanted to just bring it to your attention. I'll check it out, if you guys check it out.
We'll do the same thing.
And then, you know, just something to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We knew you had you here for a reason.
Good evening, Brett Copeland, thirty-one Franklin Street. I have a question and a suggestion. My question tonight is regarding facility usage and how the facilities are assigned for various organizations in town. I am an active member of the youth sports community, so I have a unique perspective in how fields are assigned and how facilities are assigned and the intricacies of what goes into that. This past spring, we had some instances where we had some confusion over who should have a field, who shouldn't have a field. I'm not gonna get into that, because we figured all that out with Kyle and the staff here at the office. My question tonight is specifically regarding who gets access to our facilities. What this instance had me do is go look at the guidelines the Board of Ed has in regards to the facilities. And there's one guideline that basically prohibits for-profit organizations from using facilities unless it's the discretion of the, I'm not gonna read it verbatim, but the discretion of the district, if it benefits Mahwah students or something along those lines. My question is, how is that applied across the board to for-profit organizations? And how is that determined that a for-profit organization can use our facilities and fields? And who determines if it is a, to use the words, advance the education or provide a tangible benefit to Mahwah students?
I don't have a complete answer for you, Brett, in all honesty. However, what I'd like to do is pull the policy, that's a recently revised policy that our committee has taken a look at. I'd like to talk to Kyle about who has fallen underneath that umbrella before. And in answer to the third part of your question, at the end of the day, I make the recommendation to the board, and the board ultimately decides whether or not they wanna listen to that. But I understand where you're going with as far as the subjectivity is concerned.
Correct.
And what qualifies benefits. And I don't have all those answers for you. And Kyle, unless you do, I prefer some time to take a look at it and perhaps talk to the facilities committee and get back to you. I'd also be interested, on a personal note, if you're referring to some group specifically, and if there's a reason behind that. And if you'd be kind enough to share that with me, that maybe give me some perspective as to where you're coming from.
And, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to prevent for-profit organizations from using the facilities, I mean, the facilities are open, and if it is revenue stream, I don't know what kind of revenue we generate from it. My daughter participates in a dance studio that uses a facility, so if this happens, we eliminate. I'm not gonna be the most popular person in my household. So, I'm not advocating not allowing for profit, I'm just trying to figure out exactly how that is determined, to your point.
There always has been a pecking order.
There is a pecking order in the guidelines, and for the most part, it does work out that way. It's great, you know, schools, you know, and so on. And it does work out fairly well that way. But when I was going through the guidelines and I saw this, you know, whatever is G1, outlining the idea that for-profit organizations should not have access to our facilities, that kind of raised some red flags, because I know that we do open it up to for-profit organizations. My next thing was a suggestion. Being a member, a president of the HSO at GW, I see a lot of things that are scheduled. And over the last couple of years, I've noticed things being double-booked for events at schools that should not be double-booked. For instance, Field Day at JK and GW were double-booked. My question, last year, not this year, last year. He was standing right behind me.
Maybe it's gonna be torch.
This year, there was an instance with the sixth-grade orientation being double-booked for the jazz concert that was, and had to get moved. My question or suggestion is to have a district-wide calendar that has all of the events that are going on at all the individual schools, so that it's not there. There is a district-wide calendar that says, you know, schools are off, or Board of Ed meeting, some, but it's not pulling in the individual events from the individual schools. And that's where I think one of the issues we're having, principals who are scheduling, or whoever's scheduling the events at the schools, don't know that JK's Field Day is this day, and GW wants to, you know. So if there is a way to have some kind of overall calendar, so HSOs, principals, parents for that matter, know what's going on, because a lot of us have kids in multiple schools and.
We had that for years, it came out of Mr. Ferrer's office, you weren't on board at that point. But there was a district calendar that was kept by that secretary.
Right, and when we did the policy on facility use, and this is something we talked about a long time ago, to have it set up that way, and we had one point of contact where if somebody wanted to use a facility, we had one person who basically had the calendar. Is that not the case anymore?
It should be.
I think that works, Rick, but when you have multiple facilities being booked on the same nights, for instance, you know, JK and GW having Field Days, that doesn't work on the same day. They're not using the same facility. So having the ability to know that there's something else scheduled that's gonna impact GW families or JK families, I'm just using that as an example, would be helpful.
I would agree, we have to find out whether or not there's a vehicle in order to do that, but the other, because I got you, Mike. But the other piece of it is you need somebody to oversee that. And so that adds another responsibility in the question, who is that? And I can guarantee you that this office right now is totally overworked. So I'm gonna have to go onto a plan B. But Dr. De Torre, did you?
So just to answer your question, this is a very valid point. We do have a system to do that, we do utilize that system as a centralized scheduling mechanism. Unfortunately, the problem is, at the end of the year, there are so many events across the district, and we really try to separate it as best as possible. The elementary piece from the Field Day, to kinda speak to that, that was an extenuating circumstance, and it hasn't happened in seven years since that year. That was definitely something that came up. But on, back in the year, anytime from April to June, there are concerts, there's curriculum nights, there's family nights, that we really try to do our best. We actually schedule them now for next year. It's just so happens that, and it's a great problem that we have, there's so many celebrations, so many activities of work and student success, that it's sometimes, it's unfortunate that they do cross paths, but we just realize that it's a major priority for us to make sure that the parents are able to enjoy all the events. Just sometimes it does get crossed up, and that's something that we're constantly working on. But we do have a centralized calendar and scheduling system for facilities and all of the secretary chiefs do. And they make the building administration aware if there's problems.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Unless they change the website, you can go and you can pick all the schools, and all the schools come up on the calendar and the website. Unless they change that feature.
But that's specific schools, that's not the entire district, that's who we're talking about.
You can choose as many schools as you want. Because I would choose the two schools that my children are, I only have one now, so I haven't used it in a while. Well, I haven't used it in a while, so unless they change that, you can pick multiple schools to you on your own.
We'll talk about that, and see what we can do. It's not an atypical question. Every HSO president's meeting that we have, it's been brought up for all the time.
But I mean, the facilities, they.
We need the vehicle, right, if you're saying the vehicle is there to do it. I've never done that and picked all the schools, I just look at an individual one, but for the purposes of scheduling.